Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Paul Weiss, would you please lead us in the pledge?
Absolutely.
The Pledge of Allegiance is as follows. The United States of America, in the children of our planet, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the region of justice.
Thank you, everyone. Madam Clerk, will you call roll?
Sakura.
Here.
Trenzie O'Donnell.
Here.
Deion.
Here.
Ryan.
Here.
Townsend.
Here.
Mayor Calendrino.
Here. One absent, and we do have a quorum. Thank you, everybody. At this time, we'll be looking for a motion to approve the agenda. One item, we would like to move item 8A, which is Chief Cody's report, to the top of the meeting so that he could fellowship with all his guys after our little ceremony this evening. And I'd also ask if there's anything in consent that any council member would like to remove, that I'd be looking for that information. Now, if not, I would be looking for approval to, or a motion to approve the agenda, and also moving item 8A.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Sakura, support by Deion. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Sakura.
Yes.
Trenzie O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Townsend.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you, everyone. We do have a public hearing at 7:45. We do have time before that to handle some very important business tonight. Swearing in and promotion of Officer Vincent Rennelli to Sergeant. Chief Cody, would you like to take the floor, please?
Mayor and Council, thank you. This evening, filling our agenda with these types of things, are some of the most honorable opportunities throughout my career. So again, thank you. This evening, I'm excited to be here to promote Vince Rennelli to the position of Patrol Sergeant. After tonight, his uniform will bear the badge, shoulder chevrons that are representative of a supervisory position of the rank of Sergeant for the Utica Police Department. Vince Rennelli was hired part-time into our dispatch center in 2012. By June of that year, he would move into a full-time position in dispatch. By 2015, he was sponsored by our department to go to the Police Academy here in Macomb. He attended the Police Academy, and upon graduation, was promoted to the level of Patrol Officer with our city police department. Since being hired, I have had the privilege of seeing Vince's career developed. He has always had an interest in technology that has assisted our department. His knowledge has included the use of drones, dispatch computers, communication systems for our cars. He's further applied this knowledge to the department's investigations by streamlining a paperless partnership with the Macomb County Prosecutor's Office and managing digital evidence collections for the police department. Vince was selected to be an Evidence Technician and a Field Training Officer for new officers. These are additional duties that he was eager to take on. Supervising Vince since his hiring, I have seen his dedication to the city and the department. He comes to work with a positive attitude, being energetic and interested and engaging in new challenges each day that he comes to work. I look forward to seeing Vince Rennelli bring his abilities to train, lead, and mentor our new officers of this department. I'm confident that as a Sergeant, he will serve the department and the citizens of Utica with distinction, professionalism, as he continues through his career. Tonight, I'm proud to see Vince promoted to the rank of Sergeant and become part of my command staff. So tonight, his wife Danielle will be pinning his badge on his chest, hopefully without injury. Where's he at? Okay. Hope you want to come forward, Mayor?
We'll go right ahead.
If you could raise your right hand and put your left hand on the Bible. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
Or affirm.
Or affirm.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of this state.
The Constitution of this state.
The Charter for the City of Utica.
The Charter for the City of Utica.
The rules and regulations.
The rules and regulations.
Policies and procedures.
Policies and procedures.
And the general orders.
And the general orders.
Of the Utica Police Department.
Of the Utica Police Department.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of Police Sergeant.
The duties of Police Sergeant.
For the City of Utica.
For the City of Utica.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Those of you that are here to share this moment with Vince, you're free to leave. I know it's an exciting business with the city, but if you'd like to join him for some celebration, please don't feel obligated to stay.
All right, I'll see you guys later.
You're not going anywhere. Here, stay.
I think you still have a quorum if someone's. We could scan that and store it.
Well, if you folks are still going at 10:00 PM, maybe we'll come by and.
Yeah, Vince, just leave that tab open.
As I mentioned previously, we do have a public hearing at 7:45. Moving into our agenda items, at this time, I will open the floor to anyone who has public comments for items listed on the agenda. Any member of the public would be welcome to go to the podium and state your name and address, and you'd be limited to three minutes to speak. And that, again, is for items that are listed on the agenda. As are, for the record, no one from the public is wanting to address counsel tonight. Police Chief Cody, would you like to give your report?
I would. Before you, Mayor and Counsel, you have an agenda item summary. This comes to us today. These are some promotional items for the police department. If you recall, earlier this year, there was a kind of a Citizens Action Group that has put together some funds, and they asked what in the police department could we use some monies for. Over the past couple of years in doing budgets, many things have been eliminated as we're trying to trim things for more neat items that we have. And one of those items that we've trimmed from the budget is what we call swag. It's items that we use anytime we're doing some type of public appearances, or if we go to the schools, if we go to parks, if we have any type of carnivals, things like that. We keep some of these items in our patrol vehicle, some of them here at the station. These would be everything from plastic badges, stickers, things like that, that we can engage the youth with. We take them to our schools. If we do some type of in-station tours, we would let them leave with a memento of their occasion. The money that was donated was part of a, is considered a grant. So what we're asking today is that we're moving this out of a miscellaneous police grants and putting it into our miscellaneous GL number so that we can go ahead and make this expenditure. We have a number of items that we included with the agenda item summary that would be the items that we would use this for. So we're asking for the $1,100 that was collected by our Citizens Action Group, which I do want to reach out if they are out there tonight. I want to thank them for their support, and this is directly as a result of their actions and their support of us. So, Mayor and Counsel, I would ask for a motion, one, to amend the general fund, to get the monies to a point where they can be utilized for this, and secondly, a second motion to authorize the Utica Police Department to purchase the products from this funding. Does anybody have any questions as to what this agenda item summary is requesting?
Mr. Mayor, sir, I'll make a motion to approve the allocation of funds from the general fund into the police department funds, and then additional, well, actually, motion number one. I'll make that motion, sir.
Motion by Deion.
Support.
Support by Ryan. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Sakura.
Yes.
Trenzie O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Townsend.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you, everyone.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make another motion for the chief's second request. That would be authorize him to purchase those items from his line item that he's indicated for the promotional items for the Utica Police Department.
Motion by Deion. Support. Support by Ryan. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Sakura.
Yes.
Trenzie O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Townsend.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you very much, Counsel.
Did you make sure to get extras for my children? I was gonna take about half your stock.
Anything else to report, Chief, before we set you free tonight?
Not this time, thank you.
Thank you very much. Enjoy your time with your crew.
Thank you.
We have no unfinished business. We have no correspondence to report. New business, I really don't want to get into this quite yet, because we only have.
I'm sorry, consent.
Oh, we did. Did we actually take a motion? We did not take a motion. Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent business items as presented.
Motion by Sakura. Support by Townsend. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, a roll call vote.
Sakura.
Yes.
Trenzie O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Townsend.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, motion carries. We should have went a little slower, because we're almost there. Just so I know, do we have any, when we get back to it, do we have anyone from Cassie Hines Shoes Cancer Foundation tonight that would be presenting? No? Okay. And I think in 15 seconds, we'll be there. I would be looking for a motion to enter public hearing.
So moved.
Motion by Sakura.
Support.
Support by O'Donnell. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Sakura.
Yes.
Trenzie O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Townsend.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, motion carries. We are now in public hearing. Mr. Paternoster, you have the floor, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, members of the public. This evening, we are gathered here to hold a public hearing of the 2020 fiscal year 2023 budget, the appropriations ordinance to authorize the raising of taxes to cover the 2023 budget, and to discuss the millage rates necessary to fund the budgets for the general fund and the public library. You should have had included in your agenda packet a document entitled City of Utica, Michigan Annual Budget for the Fiscal Year Ending June 30, '23, which presents to you the various funds of the City of Utica that require a budget adoption, that being the general fund, the major and local street funds, the liquor control fund, building code enforcement fund, the drug law enforcement fund, the public library fund, and the municipal building authority fund. And then you had a budget, I'm sorry, a document, which was the 2023 Annual Appropriation Ordinance. This ordinance covers the same funds that I listed in the budget, and it raises the sum of $4,442,218 by taxation in the City of Utica for the fiscal year 2022, 2023. And the millage rates that will be levied to raise that fund, we're talking a general operation mill of 16.4024, public safety millage of 1.6398, public library millage, there are two of those, 0.8197, and the extra voted millage that was approved in 2016, 0.3894, for a total of 19.2513. And you have in your packet also a 2022 tax rate request, also known as the Form L 4029, which identifies the four millage rates that we are requesting to levy. I'll bring to your attention that the headly rollback factor for tax year 2022 is 1.0000, which means that there is no reduction in millage rate required from that which was permanently reduced for the 2021 tax year. And I will be requesting that counsel approve the levy in July of the four millage rates that I identified in the appropriations ordinance. Are there any questions of the council or of the public?
I think council's been very aware of this, because we've just spent the last, what, maybe six or seven weeks, working through these numbers. I'm very proud of the work you did, Mr. Paternoster, and counsel. I think we have a very responsible budget, a surplus budget. You know, we're not tapping into our reserves in any kind of way. So I'm proud of the hard work that we've all accomplished in this. Any other questions or comments from council? And we'll be voting on this in regular council.
Correct.
Anybody from the public have any comments about the budget? And do you need to add anything for item two, Mr. Paternoster, or should we just open that up to any questions or comments? 2023 Annual Appropriation Ordinance, I think you've already discussed it.
Oh, yeah, I already mentioned that. Again, that was what I read. Section 2 of the Annual Appropriations Ordinance states that said sum of $4,442,218 be raised by taxation for the fiscal year 2023 for the purpose set forth in this ordinance to be paid into the several respected funds of the said city, those funds being the general fund and public library fund. All of the other funds that are listed in the budget and the appropriations ordinance are special revenue funds that derive their revenues either from state shared revenues, whether that be gas taxes or liquor licenses, or by rents, or building code enforcement fees.
Any questions or comments from council about this item? Anyone from the public? Nope? And then your last item was to adopt the 2022 millage rates.
That is correct. So the charter, the general operating millage was, is set by charter at 20 mills. It has been reduced by headly rollback to 16.4024. As there is no required reduction for 2022, I'm asking that the council approve for the July 1 levy, the millage of 16.4024. Public safety was a voted millage, adopted in 1968, I believe, at 2 mills. It's been reduced to 1.6398, and that is what I'm requesting counsel to approve. Public library was initially approved by the voters in 1949 at 1 mill. It has been reduced to 0.8197, and that's what I'm requesting counsel to approve. Then they, the library had a supplemental millage voted by the, or approved by the voters in 2016 at 0.4 mills. It has been reduced by headly to 0.3894. We are requesting approval at that amount for 2022. And I'll bring to your attention that the supplemental library millage does expire at the end of June 2026.
Very good. Any questions from council? Nope? Anyone from the public that would like to speak to that? No? I think we're all set.
Okay.
Anything further to add, Mr. Paternoster?
I have nothing further to add.
Thank you again. I would be looking for a motion to close public hearing and return to regular council meetings.
So moved.
Motion by Sakura.
Support.
Support by Deion. Any discussion from council? Madam Clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Sakura.
Yes.
Trenzie O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Townsend.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you, everyone. We are back in regular council meeting. In your packet is the information on the Cassie Hines Shoes Cancer Foundation 11th Annual 5K event. Let me find my place. I know we excused Chief Cody, but in talking to him, I know that the gentleman that runs this event has been in close communication with Chief Cody. The event is basically exactly as it was the last two years, I believe. If anyone was able to go to this event, you would know that it was a very well-organized event, very positive, and they did a fantastic job of raising awareness and money for their cancer foundation. So I believe, is he looking for a motion tonight, Madam Clerk, to approve this event?
Yes, I believe he was looking for a motion to approve it and have the police support for the closure of Auburn Road for that short amount of time, starting approximately between 7:30 and 8 o'clock on September 17.
Right, Saturday, September 17.
I'll make a motion to approve the running of the Cassie Hines Shoe Cancer Foundation 11th Annual 5K Run, September 17, with the stipulations of the Utica Police Department's support.
Motion by Sakura.
Support.
Support by O'Donnell. Any discussion from council? Madam Clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Sakura.
Yes.
Trenzie O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Townsend.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, motion carries. We'll be sure to reach out to the organization and let them know that they're a go for September 17. I'll be there. Anyone from council that would like to attend, I think you'll leave it feeling pretty good. It's a very uplifting event, and they do good stuff. Next on the agenda is our friends from the Utica Lions Organization. They have some very good news for us tonight. If you could, ma'am, state your name and address.
I'm Jean Pro. I'm the treasurer of the Utica Lions Club, and I've come tonight to present a check. I wish I could have done it last month, but our fiscal year ends this month. And as I was going through the budget and looking at the pluses and the minuses, I discovered that we had a few dollars extra, and we cannot start the next fiscal year with money. So I am here tonight to present $300 to the Utica Fire Department. I want to thank them so much, because when we had the car show and we did the pancake breakfast there, they were there helping us set up, they were helping us clean up and take down, and we are so grateful for their help. It was really wonderful. So is there anybody, anybody that can accept this check?
Chief Wilsec is not here tonight. He's ill, but Councilman Ryan, who's on Utica Fire Department.
$300 for Utica Lions.
Thank you.
I'd like to take just a few minutes to thank your mayor. He helped us so much with this pancake breakfast that we had last Sunday. He, we called him, and he helped us with publicity. He was there supporting us, and thanks to his efforts, we were able to donate $500 to Leader Dog for the Blind. Also, because we had a little bit extra, and as I said, we, our money comes in, and we write a check and spend it right away to give to some organization. Because of the sponsors, we had three sponsors this year, and we're trying to get more from businesses. We had three sponsors. Well, with the help of our sponsors, we were able to sponsor a young teenager to go to Bear Lake Camp. Now, I don't know if any of you are familiar with Bear Lake Camp. It's a camp for blind, hard-of-hearing teenagers. They tell me when you go there that you haven't seen anything until you've seen a blind teenager shoot a bow and arrow. I've not seen it, but I believe it. So anyway, so anyway, we were able to sponsor that. So thank you so much, Mayor, for your help. We appreciate it so much.
My pleasure.
Could you give a plug to your sponsors and say who your sponsors were?
Oh, yes, I will. I'd be glad to. I have, submit it. I have Heidenbrecht. I had Netch, I always say this wrong, so please help me. Netches, they gave us meat.
Netches.
Canadian bacon. We had Michigan custom coating of painting. And we also had Puffs. So we've had many. So if you know anybody that would be glad to sponsor us, we're right there. We'll be glad to take your check. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Pro.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And next on the agenda is pawnbroker license application. Representing that is Mr. Brian Sanders. Could you step up to the podium, sir, and state your name and address, please?
Good evening. My name's Brian Sanders. I live in Royal Oak, 3715 Hampton Boulevard. First of all, thank you for getting me on the agenda again. I was in here before, and we graciously approved what I was proposing. I had ran into some restrictions in the strip center due to the post office. They were apprehensive about the certain types of business surrounding them, so subsequently, that fell apart. So I pursued some other locations, which hasn't been easy in Utica. I'll be honest with you, there just isn't enough for rent around here. Personally, you know, I'm in Royal Oak and Birmingham my business, and I, I see so much opportunity out here in this community, especially when I drove down downtown here. I don't know what's happening, or if these things are getting rented, or what, but I'm excited to come here. I'm excited to bring my business here like I told you last time. I'm, I'm open for any questions or any issues, but nothing has changed since we met last time, other than the location. So, thank you.
And Mr. Sanders has gone through the required police background check, filed all the proper paperwork, and as he mentioned, all he's really done now is change the address. And you're gonna, your proposed location is in the.
On Hall Road, right in that small strip center.
By the Titanic restaurant.
Yes, Mayor.
Yep.
Again, looking for opportunity. I'm looking to expand. I'm looking for bigger opportunity. I want to be part of this community. I know other people are interested as well, because you guys are doing something right here, and it's being spoken about. So.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Does any of our council have any questions for Mr. Sanders? If there's no questions, Mr. Sanders would be looking for a motion to approve the pawnbroker's license for use at 11179 Hall Road.
So moved.
Motion by Deion.
Support.
Support by Ryan. Again, any discussion from council? Madam Clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Sakura.
Yes.
Trenzie O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Townsend.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Can I say one more thing?
Absolutely.
I'm very appreciative of the city attorney on your patience. I mean that. This was not an easy process for me, and got a tremendous amount of help from her, too. So I just wanted to reach out and thank you both for your time.
I love my wallet at home.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much, guys.
Yep.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Brian.
Thank you so much.
Welcome.
Next on the agenda is another pawnbroker license application. I'm going to have to learn how to say that. At 45265 Van Dyke Avenue, Mr. Mike Shakuri. Could you step up to the podium and state your name and address, sir?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Mike Shakuri. I live at 52170 Shainer Road, Shelby Township, Michigan. I'm also here to seek a pawnbroker's license. Thank you. I'm also here to seek a pawnbroker's license in the city of Utica at 45265 Van Dyke. And that's in the Utica Plaza next door to Tavoli's Pizza, which was formerly Fitness Center there. And so I've had a pawn shop in a neighboring city, in Richmond, Michigan, as well. I've done that for roughly four years, excuse me. And I look at Utica being a great opportunity for me and my family to start my career in the industry I truly enjoy. And that's about it.
I know that area of Van Dyke is definitely on my radar as one of the places that we really need to stimulate some development and business growth there. We've got the new toy store. The Reptarium is doing great, so we're really looking for, you know, good corporate citizens that are going to come in there and take good care of their property and run their business in a way that, you know, really helps us revitalize that strip.
Absolutely.
So we certainly hope that that's what you'll do, and we look forward to seeing how you develop that long vacant parcel. It's been vacant for a long time.
It's a fairly large parcel as well.
Yeah, very large. Does anyone from council have any comments, any questions for Mr. Shakuri?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I move to issue a pawnbroker's license to Mike Shakuri for use at 45265 Van Dyke.
Motion by O'Donnell.
Support.
Support by Sikora. Any discussion from council? Madam Clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Sikora.
Yes.
Trenzie O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Townsend.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Mr. Shakuri.
Thank you, sir.
Any idea when you'll be open?
Honestly, I put in schedule for construction to start tomorrow, so I'm hoping by August 1st. That's my ultimate goal.
Excellent. But once again, congratulations.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you.
Onto department reports. I'll kick it off. Number one, right before the council meeting, I took a drive around the city, and I'm not going to steal all of Mr. Lang's thunder, but we have some resurfacing projects going on on Messmore, Custer, and Greeley. Very good news. I don't know if you've been around, Mr. Lang, but they've got the pavement down. It looks like it's all down, and striping, I'm guessing, is going to come soon after that. Very pleased. I know a couple residents on Messmore stopped me, and they were real happy that we were addressing the Messmore because of its condition before we did it, so great stuff. That should be done. Again, you'll probably address it in your report. We have a pretty big event in Utica this weekend, the Utica Palooza, sponsored by the Sparkle Network and Women's Life Chapter 911. They're going to be all over the city of Utica. They have, I believe it's four events going on, all in Utica. One is a 5K walk to raise awareness for dementia and Alzheimer's. That'll be at Grant Park. It's a 5K walk or run, starts at 9:00 a.m., registration at 8:00 a.m. The walk begins at 9:00. For the admission fee of $20, you get a t-shirt and a bib. I'll be there. I'll definitely be walking, not running, so if anyone would like to join me, hope to see at 9:00 a.m. They also have a mini road rally, scavenger hunt. That'll be focusing on locations throughout the city of Utica. And also a flea market at the American Legion Post 351. I believe that starts at 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. And then the finale for the night is a comedy show at American Legion Post 351, where there's going to be, I believe, four comics, snacks, drinks. Should be a nice event. Doors open at 6:00 p.m. Show starts at 7:00 p.m. So if you're looking for anything fun to do in Utica, that's definitely the place to Ms. Pro was here, mentioned it. The Utica Lions Club had a donation-only pancake breakfast at Grant Park on Sunday. From what I saw, it was very well-attended. The food was fantastic. They've created this new entree, a little like Egg McMuffin.
They're good.
And it was fantastic. Lot of people, lot of neighbors, and as Ms. Pro indicated, they raised a lot of money for good causes, so they continue to just do great work in this city. We're lucky to have them. And that's all I have to report tonight. Does anyone from council?
I do.
Yes, please.
Mr. Mayor, I was speaking with Ms. Emily at the library. She handles the kids' summer reading program. She will be hosting on June 23 at 2:00 p.m. for kids in the community, a collaborative community mural on a small area of the tunnel right here by the clock tower at Memorial Park. All residents below the age of 18 are welcome. So if you are interested and you're under the age of 18, we're just going to have a small area. I believe we're going to paint a tree, and people are going to be able to leave their handprints in the tunnel. So I have a lot of leftover paint. I'll prep the area for them and everything a couple days before. The library personnel is going to paint a pretty tree. And anyone is welcome, but we want to remind everyone that any young person who would like to sign up for the summer reading program can register at the link on the Utica Public Libraries Facebook page. Is that correct? Or come into the library. And if you are not a part of the reading program and you want to attend the event, you can email me at sherry.townsend.uticascc@gmail.com, which is also on the Utica website. If you go under City Council, it has all our information. So if you'd like to attend and you're not a part of the reading program, please email me, and I will make sure that there's a space for you.
Thank you.
I am finished. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone from council have anything else to report? I do have one more item of business. We have someone who has volunteered to join, rejoin our Parks and Rec Committee, Greg Latta. I've not had too many residents that made so many connections out to me, you know. You reached out to me at least three times, like, "Mayor, what can I do? Mayor, what can I do?" Greg served on Parks and Rec previously. Due to life situations, he had to take a small break, but he's back and wants to rejoin. I know our Parks and Rec, we've had a lot of energy lately. We've got a few really neat things going on, and Greg has graciously offered to rejoin that commission. In your packet is his resume as well as certificate. I would be looking for a motion to appoint Greg Latta to the Parks and Rec Commission.
So moved.
Motion by Sikora.
Support.
Support by Deion. Any discussion from council? Madam Clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Sikora.
Yes.
Trenzie O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Townsend.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, motion carries. Congratulations, Greg. We have your certificate for you. I made sure I signed it.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Great to have you.
Thank you. Thanks again. I appreciate it.
I appreciate you.
Good to see you.
Greg is heading back. Thank you.
Next on the agenda is Steampunk Tent Request. I think we have Mr. Paul Weiss from Steampunk to present his request to us tonight. If you could state your name and address, sir?
Council, my name is Mayor. My name is Paul Weiss. I live at 40275 Emerald Lane West in Clinton Township. My business address is 7722 Auburn Road, Steampunk Tap Room. Due to COVID, we had requested and received approval to have a tent out on our patio. It's been great. Our customers really enjoy it. They really enjoy coming out there and being outside, and I'd like to just have that through the rest of the summer, so I've requested... I placed a permit request to extend for four months. That would take us into September, at which time, if everything goes well, I'll be talking to council and to the building department about potentially adding a more permanent structure in that location. That would kind of replace the tent and serve the same type of purpose. So appreciate the fact that the council and mayor approved the first time around. Like I say, people seem to really enjoy it.
And I know Paul's already had fire out there. There was, I think there were a couple things that we're still working through, right? So if we do, when we make a motion, I think we should include subject to final inspection by fire. I know I've spent many evenings out on that patio, probably a few too many.
Never too many, sir.
It's very pleasant. I think you've done a really nice job out there, and it adds to our downtown ambiance, so I certainly appreciate it. So four months would actually take you to the beginning of October, if that's correct, right?
Yeah, I guess it was four months from when the original permit had been requested. However, if we date it to now, then it would take us, as you say, into the beginning of October.
So that'd be like October 14th, or...
I'll make a motion to approve the four-month temporary tent permit to Steampunk at 7722 Auburn Road, subject to final inspections.
Support.
Motion by Sikora. Support by, is that right?
Did you call it?
Yeah.
Go ahead, my friend.
Support by Ryan. Any discussion from council? And I do believe you're paying a monthly permit fee. Is that correct? Is that how it works?
Negative. No, there was a single time.
There's a single fee?
Yeah.
And that's all been worked out, right?
He does contribute to the Weekend Unwind every week, doesn't he? Isn't that...
You know, let's give him a plug for that, too. For anyone listening out in TV land, Paul's been very generous and helped us sponsor all the bands for the entire Weekend Unwind music series at Memorial Park. We do give you, I know you're busy working probably and don't hear us over there, but if it's me shilling for you or Tom, we definitely make sure you get, Steampunk gets plenty of mentions down there.
We appreciate it, and you know, it's a great event. Very happy that the city does it and continues to do it every year. I think a lot of people really enjoy it. We're happy to be a sponsor, and we can discuss maybe getting some signage. That would be great, but that's separate to...
What about those searchlights we give?
I just noticed a lot of times when the shilling is occurring, people are chatting because there's no music at that time, so they're not necessarily, you know, processing it.
Do you mean at the Steampunk Municipal Park? Is that who you're referring to? Is that the place you're talking about? All right. We had a motion and a support. Any further discussion from council? Madam Clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Sikora.
Yes.
Trenzie O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Townsend.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, motion carries. Congratulations, Paul.
Thank you very much.
Now, you need to extend your hours a little later, so after long council meetings...
Particularly on council nights.
On council meeting nights.
Just a second Tuesday of the month early.
Ms. Francis, anything from library?
Yeah, I mean, thank you, Sheri, for saying everything you have to say. Summer reading is going on right now, and I want to thank, we had our kickoff party on Saturday. I want to thank DPW for their help in preparation for that day, and Mayor, for your help in doing what you did early Saturday morning. Even the police department stepped in a little bit, helped us out, so thank you for that. And we have lots of fun things planned for the summer reading, as Sheri already said, one of the things we're going to do. Reptarium is going to come to the library, so any other activities, people can still go on the website, still register, come in, so that's about it.
Excellent. Thank you.
Fire.
As mentioned, Chief Willsec is excused tonight. I know he talked to Councilman Ryan. Did you have anything you wanted to present for Chief Willsec tonight?
I'm not, I was not made aware of anything else to be presented for fire.
Very good. Thank you, sir. DPW, Mr. Lang.
Mayor, council, you have the packet of requests to adopt the resolution approving Amendment Number 4 to the Great Lakes Water Authority water contract that we operate under. Periodically, we meet, and when I say we, it's, this year was myself, Mr. Patenoster, the treasurer, the mayor, members of HRC, the engineering firm to go over our... Oh, it's, there are different points that we can adjust if we find it fruitful to... Those numbers are what they utilize in the rate methodology to figure out our rate for our water use throughout the course of the contract. So as our volumes change or our usage changes, our peak times change, we can adjust that periodically. And what's in front of you is Amendment 4, which represents those changes in which there are none. We're pretty much operating at about the targets that we feel are best suited for the city, and it was a collaborative effort of all of us, and so what's in front of you is a resolution that's needed to be, or requested to be adopted to approve Amendment Number 4. If you have any questions, I'll answer those, best I can. We did have, I believe, Ms. McGrail reviewed it.
Correct.
So that's what we've gone through, that process. This is our second time or third time doing this.
I'll make a motion to approve or adopt Amendment Number 4 to Water Service Contract Between Great Lakes Water Authority and the City of Utica.
Support. Motion by Sikora. Support by O'Donnell. I would say it was an interesting process, because you look at all these parameters, your peak times, and you know, your volumes, and it's very tempting to say, oh, you know, maybe we could reduce our peak time usage here, but you know, if something bad happens, if you have a water main break, or you know, just a really dry summer and everybody's watering their lawns, and you exceed that peak that you contractually agreed to, you could get in a lot of trouble, and we've seen a couple of our neighboring communities, they, you know, what happens then is you're basically, you know, broke the contract and you're subject to pretty steep rate increases. So as tempting as it was to kind of look at a couple of them, I would agree with Mr. Lang. I think, you know, you've done a great job, HRC, in finding like the perfect sweet spot, you know, for all those parameters, and ultimately, we just left everything, I believe every parameter exactly as it was, if I recall. So thanks for all that, Mr. Lang. Any other discussion from council?
I just call your attention to the actual certification resolution that you'll be adopting. I don't know if we need to make reference to that, but I know Great Lakes Water Authority wants something specific like this, so if you could just make reference to adopting this, that was prepared by Mr. Patenoster, which is an example that was given to us from Great Lakes Water. Thank you.
I think you should do either a second motion or a friendly amendment to...
Oh, okay.
Because you can't do a resolution unless you have a vote on it.
Okay. However, if you could help me out with that one, I'd appreciate it.
Did we already vote on the other one or not?
Yep.
So, we did not?
We have a motion.
No.
So you could do a friendly amendment to approve of the resolution provided in the packet.
We'll add that to the motion.
And then the second, whoever seconded it would have to agree for a friendly amendment. And then the second, whoever seconded it would have to agree for a friendly amendment.
Counselor O'Donnell.
Yeah, yes, I agree.
All right.
Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Sakura.
Yes.
Trenzie. O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Townsend.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes, motion carries. Any other good news for us, Mr. Lang?
Um, I have a question. I'm sorry, Mr.? I do have a question. Have we heard anything back from Great Lakes Water Authority as regards to the Highland Park situation, if they come to any type of agreement regarding that? Have we heard anything back on that yet? I've seen some stuff in paper.
I actually, to be hon, well, to be perfectly honest with you, I have it on my desk and I haven't read it completely. I don't believe they're looking after us at all at this point.
No, they've, I think Mr. Paternoster's probably going to address that when he talks. But yeah, there's, we got news from Great Lakes Water and from Candace Miller's office that they are pulling all those bad debt fees out of our bill and actually lowering, it's not a lot, but they're actually lowering our charge. We just, I think we just got an email on that today, right before, not long before the council meeting. But that's a great question, yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
The only other thing I'll add to is the road projects. Actually, the, from what we could see, it went very well. I mean, we ended up pushing the date back a week from what we had originally anticipated, but it worked out well. We had expected a three-day process. It looks like it's going to be done in two. There may be some final cleanup or, you know, some minor issues that have come up for restoration and things. But other than that, the project is complete. I do want to thank the residents. There was a lot of cooperation out there. And just moving forward, I know the Mayor and I have talked about, and Phil, about projecting another street to, or so to get worked on for next budget year. And just for the general public, their cooperation in these types of projects is really a big deal. We need, you know, if you want a new road, there's going to be some inconvenience. And folks really stepped up and helped us out, so we appreciate that.
For sure. Anything else, sir?
Nope, where else at? Thank you for your support. We'll keep moving. It's going to get hot, so.
It is, starting tomorrow.
Yeah, it's going to get hot.
I hope that asphalt, new asphalt doesn't melt.
Well, and that, you know, maybe I will add that, actually, on the new roads, if anybody's listening, in these blistering heat, if you can avoid parking on it, your car will actually settle into it until that, even though the asphalt's cured, it's kind of, it's almost like a, I'll call it like a fresh marshmallow, you know? If you stop on it too long, you'll kind of sink into it.
All right.
So if you can, you know, avoid parking on it for a couple of weeks would be helpful, especially in the, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lang. Treasurer report, Mr. Paternoster.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. First thing on the agenda is the adoption of the 2023 budget, the appropriations ordinance to support that budget, and the adoption of the millage rates that will require three separate motions. I would request the motion to adopt the annual budget for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2023, as presented in the council packet and briefly discussed at the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to adopt the 20, the budget ending June 30, 2023, as presented in the packet.
Motion by Sakura.
Support.
Support by Townsend. Any discussion from council? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sakura.
Yes.
Trenzie O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Townsend.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes, motion carries. Your next item, Mr. Paternoster.
I request a motion to adopt the 2023 annual appropriation ordinance as presented in your packet and briefly discussed at the public hearing. This ordinance would raise the sum of $4,442,218 by taxation for the City of Utica General Fund and the Utica Public Library.
I'll make a motion to do all that.
Motion by Sakura.
Support, to do all that.
Support by O'Donnell.
Just write that down, Laurie, all that.
Any discussion from council? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sakura.
Yes.
Trenzie O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Townsend.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes, motion carries. And your final item, sir.
A motion to adopt the 2022 millage rates as presented in your council packet and presented at the public hearing. I will reiterate those. The charter authorized general operating millage at 16.4024 mils, public safety millage at 1.6398, public library 0.8197, and the public library special voted millage of 0.3894 for a total of, okay, I had it here, 19, bear with me, sorry. 19.2513. I will add, for the public's benefit, that there is no street debt millage being requested this year, as the bonds were matured last October.
Getting rid of debt is always a good thing.
Yes.
You corrected me today. Sometimes that's good. In this case, we're glad to have the road debt gone. So as stated by Mr. Paternoster, he'd be looking for a motion to adopt the 2022 millage rates?
So moved.
Motion by Sakura.
Support.
Support by Deion. Any discussion from council? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sakura.
Yes.
Trenzie O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Townsend.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes, motion carries. Your next item, sir.
The next item on the agenda is the request to adopt the 2023 fiscal year sewer and water rates. The rates that were presented in the council packet included an amount for Highland Park bad debt expense. In answer to Councilman Ryan's question, I did receive an email, I think it was on Friday, from Great Lakes Water Authority, indicating that they were withdrawing that charge. And the net effect on our annual budget was $2,000 on the water side, which, when plugged into the rate calculator, reduced the consumption charge for water from 6.25 cents, as presented in your council packet, to 6.24 cents. I received this morning an email from the Macomb County Public Works Commissioner with a revised budget for the sanitary sewer. Macomb County Public Works Department also withdrew the bad debt from their charges, resulting in a decrease in my proposed consumption charge for sewer from $11.31 to $11.20. So I would request a motion from council to adopt the fiscal year 2023 water and sewer rates as presented in the packet with the changes to the consumption charges from 6.24, from 6.25 cents to 6.24 per thousand gallons for water, and from 11.31 down to 11.20 on the sewer.
Mr. Lang, he has a question.
Actually, if I urge you, right, 6.2-some cents per thousand?
$6. Twenty, $6, I'm sorry, $6.24.
Thank you.
Did I hear?
Yes, you did.
And $11.20 is the revised consumption rate. Thank you for correcting me.
That was not a correction, that was...
That was keeping your department alive.
I don't want to come back next month.
So as stated, Mr. Paternoster is looking for a motion.
So moved.
Motion by Sakura.
Support.
Support by O'Donnell. This process really started, what, maybe, was it three years ago, Mr. Paternoster? Where we are adopting the water rates every year now?
Correct.
And I just want to thank you for how meticulous you are. He puts a lot of work into this, and it shows what, we really want our residents to know that we're making every effort to charge what it actually costs the city to operate the system and provide the service, down to the 12 cents that you mentioned. I mean, that's how meticulous your work is. So I really appreciate it. I think we're on the right track with the way we are running our water and sewer now, remedying any mistakes we've made in the past. And again, thank you for all your hard work.
You're welcome.
Any further discussion from council? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sakura.
Yes.
Trenzie O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Townsend.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes, motion carries. And your second item, sir?
Second item regarding the water and sewer system is a request for the adoption of the sewer and water fund budget for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2023, as presented in the council packet.
So moved.
Motion by Sakura.
Support.
Support by O'Donnell. Any discussion from council? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sakura.
Yes.
Trenzie O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Townsend.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Paternoster.
One more item, if I could.
Absolutely, sir.
And because of the late-breaking news with regards to the Highland Park bad debt being removed from the bills that we will be receiving, I'm requesting that council rescind the motion it made at a previous council meeting directing the Treasurer to escrow the bad debt and withhold that from payment to...
It was actually a resolution, I believe.
I believe so.
I'll make a motion to rescind the resolution that had the Treasurer escrow the Highland Park bad debt funds. That's it?
Motion by Sakura.
Support.
Support by Ryan. Any discussion from council?
Just one question of legal counsel. We probably have to do that as a resolution, if we adopt a resolution, right?
Yeah, I think you probably do.
Do I need to reprint that and bring it to the July meeting?
To do it right, you do.
Okay, we will, I will withdraw my request then.
I'll withdraw my motion.
And really, you'll have no charges, bad debt charges, to put in escrow, so it's not going to financially affect the city. It's just we want to formally rescind that resolution at our next council meeting. Okay, very good. Anything further, Mr. Paternoster?
I have nothing further in the way of motions. I just want to alert the taxpaying public that tax bills should be going out in the last week of June or the very first week of July. Be on the alert for them. If your taxes are escrowed by your mortgage company, you'll be receiving a tax bill that is a memorandum only. Don't feel you have to pay it. If your taxes are not escrowed, you'll be receiving a tax bill that requires your payment. I will say that while the city held its millage rates the same and eliminated the debt service from the millage table, the cost of inflation at three and a half percent on your taxable value appears to be enough that you will see a very small increase in your tax bill.
We did a workup for my house today, and what was the note? I think...
$24.
My taxes went up $24.
In the mayor's mansion?
That included the increase in the, in the rubbish collection fee, which I believe went up by roughly four bucks.
Right, so about 20 bucks in tax. Thank you, Ms. Paternoster.
You're welcome.
Madam Clerk, any report from administration?
From the Clerk's office, Mayor and Council, I would like to just report that absentee voter applications will, are printed and will be going out in the mail to those who are requesting them for our August 2 election. That's all I would like to, the ballots arrived today, so as soon as we get those back, we can start mailing out the ballots. Thank you.
Excellent, is that it?
That's it.
Thank you. Parks and Rec Commission, I'll be speaking for them tonight. I have some great news. Our friend at Puff Cannabis, Mr. Marvin Kezey, has made the generous offer to resurface the basketball courts at Grant Park. It's going to be, if approved, it's going to be this product called Sport Court. I know they're doing it at Mays, they've already done it at May Stecker Park. They've either done it or are working on it at Delia Park in Sterling Heights. I went a couple nights ago and talked to some of the guys, older guys that were playing basketball at Grant Park, and said, hey, what do you think about this Sport Court surface? And they were totally excited. They're like, tell me we're getting it here at Grant Park. I'm like, well, I can't really say anything yet. It's very exciting news. Also, as part of that, is the Sport Court installation team said that there's, all the cracks that are in the plain surface right now at Grant Park need to be filled. We didn't really have the capability to do that, so Mr. Kezey's also including that as part of his donation. The one item that he did ask for is to, that we provide him an indemnification agreement, which you'll see in your packet. That just doesn't hold, that's just so that he's not, you know, held liable if anybody gets injured or, anything to add to that?
And Mayor, if I could add, you know, the contractor will still be making the city, and I believe Mr. Kezey or his company, additional insurance on their policies, too. So the city still does have their coverage in that regard. And then it also does note in there that, that we've agreed that this is a donation to the city, and that allows Mr. Kezey to deduct it from his taxes.
For sure. So that's it. I would be looking for a motion to approve the indemnification agreement.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the indemnification agreement as presented by Mr. Marvin Kezey.
Support.
Motion by O'Donnell, support by Sakura. Any discussion from council? I'll add, you know, we all know about the supply chain delays. In talking to the Sport Court rep, he said that we're probably out at least four weeks for the actual decking material to get here, but he's rushing it as fast as he can. He's putting that on the top of his list, so very exciting. Any further discussion from council? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sakura.
Yes.
Trenzie O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Townsend.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes, motion carries. And the last items on the agenda, I'll hand over to the city attorney, Ms. Linda McGrath.
Mayor and Council, I presented to you in the council packet a document titled "Letter of Understanding Between City of Utica and Michigan Association of Firefighters Representing Utica Firefighters Association." That would basically allow the city to hire people who are only certified as a firefighter or an EMT. The goal of that is to increase recruitment. The dollar amount is put in there, the union not only is agreement, but approach the city...
city about that in attempts to get more employees and people that want to work in the Utica Fire Department. So, I would be requesting a motion to approve that letter of understanding and authorize the execution of same.
So moved.
Motion by Sakura.
Support.
Support by O'Donnell. Any discussion from council? Madam Clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Sakura.
Yes.
Trenzie, O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Ryan.
Abstain.
Townsend.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes.
And just so the record's clear on the assumption, I understand that Councilman Ryan has abstained from voting because he is also a member of the Fire Department, and that's just to alleviate any appearance of impropriety.
Thank you, Ms. McGrill. Motion carries. Your next item?
You've also been provided with another agreement in relation to the police department. I would request a motion to approve that agreement and execution thereof.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Deion, support by Sakura. Any discussion from council? Madam Clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Sakura.
Yes.
Trenzie, O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Townsend.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes, motion carries. Anything else to share with us, Ms. McGrill?
No, you did receive an attorney-client communication packet earlier today. I would be more comfortable, as long as it's okay with everyone, if I could get that back, just that, you know, people inadvertently leave things laying around and...
Are you sure?
Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Nothing further, I'll make sure I don't...
Thank you very much. At this point in the meeting, we open up the floor to communication from the public, and that would be for any item not on the agenda. Is there anyone from the public that would like to address council? If not, I would be looking for a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor, I would make a motion to adjourn the meeting. Motion by Deion.
Support.
Support by Sakura. Any discussion from council? Madam Clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Sakura.
Yes.
Trenzie, O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Ryan.
Abstain.
Motion carries. We are adjourned.